Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the Second District and the Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have our Councilmember Zeke Cohen from the First District, as well as, thank you, as well as Preston Lewis from the Council President's Office, and our committee staffer, Deontre Hayes. Before we get started, I just want to ask everyone, and please take a moment to turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. Today, the Committee is holding a hearing on Resolution 21-0039, an overlooked violence against women and overlooked public health crisis. This is for the purpose of inviting relevant agencies before the HEC Committee and certain community-based organizations to appear to discuss the rise in violence against women and what strategies are being put in place to reverse this epidemic. We're going to start with just remarks from myself, the sponsor of the bill, then we're going to hear updates from our agencies. And then if we have any questions from any councilmembers who are present today, we'll get to them, and then we're going to move into public testimony. So just to start, I just wanted to remind everyone while we're here today, in 2020, we saw an unprecedented spike with 49 women and girls killed in one year, and that was the highest in our city's history. The statistics for violence against women represent a broader public health crisis, marked not only by deaths, but also by countless incidents of aggravated assaults, sexual violence, and other serious crimes against women. Today, as we convene for our fifth hearing, this council term to discuss this pressing issue, our focus extends beyond the numbers. We're here to understand the multifaceted outcomes of this violence, which ripple through the mental, emotional, and physical health of women and their families across our city. This crisis requires a comprehensive response integrating prevention, intervention, and support services. Our goal today is to closely examine the latest data trends, assess agency progress, and identify gaps in our current strategies. I am grateful for the presence of my colleague, who showed up today, and our agency representatives, who are committed to this cause. At this time, we're going to start with our agencies. For our State's Attorney's Office, previously, you had a verbal report. Did you guys want to stand by that report? Or did you want to add to it at this time?
Hi, Jesse Halverson. I'm the Division Chief of the Special Victims Unit of the State's Attorney's Office, Madam Chairwoman, other members of the City Council, and other members. I'm very happy to be here today. I fill the shoes of Michelle Lambert. Now Judge Lambert, it's my understanding that she was one of the last people from our agency to testify. I did look at what I could see of her remarks from last time. I would say and just emphasize that one of the things that we do in the State's Attorney's Office, because we're responsible for the felony domestic violence prosecutions, but also the district court and misdemeanor domestic violence prosecutions, which are the overwhelming majority of cases by the numbers, and are an opportunity to intervene before things escalate. And I would say that one of the things she spoke about is something we still do, which is to keep cases open even when they are filed by civilians, you know, ninety, over 90% women. And that even if we're not able to reach them before the trial date, those are some of the few cases that we will not dismiss ahead of time. We leave them open to the trial date because we don't know what the circumstances of these women are. Are they unhoused because of the domestic violence they experienced? Have they no longer have access to a cellphone? So given that we understand that time is a very chaotic time, we do leave those cases open. And on June 6th, our office made a presentation to the judges, some of the judges in Baltimore City, about some of these policies. So they understood the importance of leaving those cases open to give those victims every opportunity to come to court if they still wanted to and to proceed. And at the felony level, we are still not leaving the complete decision in the hands of the victim, whether or not they go forward. I think everyone in this room understands that domestic violence victims, there's a cycle of interest in prosecution versus the interest in healing or getting on with their lives. So we try to encourage and support them to go forward because it does seem the best outcome in the case most of the time. And that as part of any pleas, we almost always insist on abuser intervention programs, such as the House of Ruth or other programs. Those programs are shown to have a positive impact on recidivism and the amount of violence going forward. So I guess I am saying we do stand on those remarks, but I'm just reemphasizing how our commitment is to all the details that make that program as helpful as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Bullock, Councilman John Bullock, member of the Committee. And we're going to go to our City Solicitor's Office. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, the City Solicitor's Office stands by their report.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Chanel. I didn't see you over there. Representing Mayor's Office, okay. So we're going to go to our Police Department at this time. I understand that you guys have a presentation.
So good morning, everyone. Deputy Commissioner Kevin Jones, Operations, joined here today, Erin Murphy, Lieutenant Colonel Holman, as well as Major Boyd from SIS, as well as Chardelle Rose in reference to our Victim Services Unit. I will say, BBD's policy on intimate partner violence, 7/11, as well as 1208 in reference to children that have witnessed these atrocity addresses, mitigating instances of this impact these intimate partner violence has on the community. The policies emphasize prompting professional response as well as a comprehensive investigation to victim support and special consideration for children who have witnessed domestic violence. The collaborative effort between our agencies, the State's Attorney's Office, Department of Social Services, and the community organization ensures a holistic support system for victims and their families. As you can see in reference to the slide that is up right now, this is a overall view of Part 1 crimes involving victims for the city. As we can see, highlighted are female victims of these crimes. We are seeing a trend in reference to not only homicides and attempted murders in reference to this. We've seen a reduction as compared to the numbers in '22 and '23. Next slide. Again, this is Part 1 crimes as far as our perpetrators are identified. We have also seen some reductions as well. We're just highlighting the differences between identifying the perpetrators as male and female, some coming up as unknown. We still stand by a reduction that we're seeing because of this collaborative effort and this increase in high visibility and focus that we have had in violence against women, ensuring that not only it's a police response, but also that we're doing this triage, this concierge service in reference to follow-up, in reference to helping them navigate this sometimes confusing system at a time of stress and trauma. So it is our belief that what we have in place, although not the end result, is improving and continually something that we are looking to improve upon. Next slide. This slide goes over the Part 1 female victims, as well as the arrest rate for these cases. We do know that when it comes to intimate partner violence, you know, there is some more than likely, we've seen that this is an acquaintance cases and, you know, working with our victims and witnesses in reference to identifying these individuals to hold them accountable for their actions. Again, this goes back to females as the perpetrators of these cases, identifying, you know, those root causes, but also some systemic things that are good dealing with individuals who are unfortunately in this same cycle of violence, trying to figure out ways in reference to trying to understand what gets individuals to this point. I think I've said it before in many council hearings, you know, we're good at pulling people out of the river. When they're drowning, the problem is we need to do a better job of finding out where they're falling in. So we're looking more upstream to try to identify those issues that individuals are facing that brings them to this point. Next slide. Is that the end of our? Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate, as an agency, this is something that we understand, has continually been a focus of this council. We have seen, I believe, the reductions that we're wanting to see. While we're not where we want to be as an agency in reference to addressing these issues, I think we are far beyond where we were when we initially started this push, bringing on individuals that are hyper-focused, changing the staffing in reference to Major Boyd for the Special Investigations Unit, as well as bringing on Director Rose in reference to Victim Services is a big thing for this agency. I think we don't, for so long, we've just looked at it in a silo of officers responding to crimes, writing reports. But now we realize that there's a level of triage and personalized service for everyone. What we're focusing on is improving this to be responsive to not only the agency, but also to the society enlarging these individuals that it impacts because it is just not the one victim themselves that's impacted on their family as well as their children. I will say that what we've seen, a major part is Chief Delarocco and our Biological Services Unit. We've seen a large turnaround in safe kits. In 2023, year-to-date, as of June 1, there was 188 kits that were still outstanding. Our turnaround time right now has dramatically decreased. For 2024, as of 6/1, there are 44 cases that have been in the queue as far as turnaround time. So we are significantly addressing all aspects of how we deal with violence against females because it is not only important to this agency, but we realize the ramifications it has on the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you for my colleagues who are here. We're going to hold our questions until we get through all of our agencies. We're going to hear from our Health Department next.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. My name is Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director at the Baltimore City Health Department. And we have a presentation for you today. I am accompanied by my colleagues Ayesha Burgess, our Director of our Office of Youth and Trauma Services, and Rebecca Deneen, Assistant Commissioner, Maternal and Child Health. And do you all have our presentation? Thank you. And does someone have the? Oh, you're doing it for us. Thank you so much. Perfect, thank you. So violence against women and violence in general is an issue that is threaded throughout some of our programs. So I'm going to pass this along to Assistant Commissioner Deneen.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Committee. My name is Rebecca Deneen. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health. We run an initiative in the city called Be More for Healthy Babies, under which a lot of the work that I will describe exists. With programs and services, just for a highlight, between Ms. Burgess and myself, we run the maternal mortality review, we do screenings for violence, sexual violence prevention and education, school-based violence prevention and victim services. Next slide. I'm going to start with the maternal mortality review. We run three mortality reviews in the city. Maternal mortality review, child fatality review, and fetal and infant mortality review. Those reviews and the recommendations that come through them are the recommendations that we use for all of our initiative activities under Be More for Healthy Babies. Baltimore City was the first city in the state of Maryland to launch a maternal mortality review. We wrote legislation back in 2021, and we were able to pass through the state a local maternal mortality review team. What we've found through our reviews is that homicide is the third-leading cause of maternal mortality in Baltimore City. And between 2013 and 2021, 13 of our deaths, of the 98 deaths, were due to homicide. Most of these deaths that are homicides are considered to be pregnancy-related, which means that the perpetrator's reaction to the pregnancy precipitated the violence. So our recommendations from that review to date have been that there is not funding directed yet. And when we've been looking through grants ourselves, specific funding directed to violence during pregnancy. And so we're looking to boost that. We, the reviews have highlighted intimate partner violence in pregnancy with the importance of educating our prenatal providers citywide about this issue. We do provide implicit bias training for providers and community partners so that everyone is screened for all risk factors, regardless of their profile, race, education, and employment. So in other words, we want to make sure that every woman in the city is screened so that we don't make assumptions about who or who might not be experiencing intimate partner violence. We conduct education on IPV, intimate partner violence, and consent in schools, including with students who receive special education services. They tend to be students who are at the highest risk for violence. We also ran, back when I was early on in the Health Department, we had a research grant with Johns Hopkins University called DOVE, and it was an intervention for our home visiting programs to make sure that we had a nurse who was skilled in not just the screening, but how do you make sure you have proper counseling for women who are experiencing domestic violence? That program ran, was a research program. It had great results. There was no subsequent funding behind that program that we were able to obtain. Next slide, please. So as I said, Be More for Healthy Babies is an initiative in Baltimore City that's aim is to improve maternal health and prevent infant and maternal mortality. It's a comprehensive strategy that deals with the life course. That means that we're dealing with people in the womb all the way to when they're older adults. The recommendations from our reviews, as I've said, our child fatality, fetal infant mortality, and maternal mortality reviews are implemented through this strategy. Programs within our initiative that are generally doing screening right now and referral. We have a care coordination centralized intake system that reaches about 5,000 women every year. Home visiting programs, our community programs in Upton Druid Heights, Patterson Park, and Cherry Hill, and our WIC sites where the screening takes place. Screenings are completed often by trained nurses, social workers, WIC certification specialists, and community health workers. And when the screening results are positive, the staff engage in a conversation about safety and resources. They're trained in motivational interviewing, and they are trained in what resources exist across the city for IPV. Next slide, please. The screenings for pregnant people, the screenings are conducted at multiple touchpoints across our care continuum, and those include at the first prenatal care visit. And this is documented by physicians, by obstetricians, through a prenatal risk assessment, which is sent to our Care Coordination Group, which is called Healthcare Access Maryland, and that triggers care coordination. So our care coordinators, who are usually community health workers, look at the prenatal risk assessment and identify risk factors, one of which is IPV. Through care coordination at this agency, we link pregnant people and their families to home visiting services, WIC services, and other health and communities resources. And through the pregnant person's home visiting program, there are, at multiple intervals, they are screened, and they, these home visiting programs work with these provider, work with these clients from pregnancy to two years postpartum. During WIC enrollment, the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, we, there is a screening for IPV, and that leads to referrals that are identified through our WIC database. And at delivery by the birthing hospital, there's another form that's filled out by hospitals called the Postpartum Infant and Maternal Referral, and that also triggers the Healthcare Access Maryland screening for intimate partner violence and linkage to resources. Next slide, please. In addition to what we do with pregnant people and postpartum people, we are also working with adolescent and reproductive health. Part of Be More for Healthy Babies has preconception health as it's one big arm of our work. And that work is called You Choose, Know What You Want. And that is for young adolescents, ages 11 through 24, I guess, young adults. And it is part of an initiative called the Be More for Healthy Babies Youth Sexual Health Initiative. We have Title Planning, Title 10 Family Planning Clinics in, at 1515 North Avenue and at 1200 East Fayette Street. Both of these clinics do screenings through social workers on intimate partner violence, among other risk factors, substance use disorder and other sorts of things. And then, as we do with HCAM, we refer adolescents to House of Ruth, Turnaround, and other community services. We also have a number of subcontracted partners, clinical partners across the city, Harriet Lane, different federally qualified health centers. They have to follow that same protocol. Next slide. So in terms of our data, we screen about 5,000, as I said, pregnant and postpartum people annually through this prenatal risk assessment. And these are primarily Medicaid recipients. Approximately 1,000 pregnant and postpartum people are screened through our home visiting programs. Approximately 3,000 pregnant and postpartum people are screened through our WIC programs. And then approximately 1,200 adolescents and young adults are screened through our Title 10 clinics that we see. Next slide, please. In addition to screening, we do sexual violence prevention and education through our You Choose program. And this provides comprehensive reproductive health education to middle and high school students in partnership with the Baltimore City Public Schools. The education is both education and outreach on the importance of consent prior to sexual activity to youth of all genders. This is done in the classroom, online, and on social media. We also talk about healthy relationships. When we are in a situation where we find that an adolescent has, is at risk for domestic violence, again, they're referred to House of Youth and other intimate partner violence resources. And we are specifically interested in those that are serving LGBTQ youth, and we are, we've been advocating for those partners to join us in our Youth Sexual Health Initiative Coalition, of which we have about 40 partners involved. And I believe... I am passing the baton to my colleague, Ms. Burgess.
Good morning. My name is Ayesha Burgess, and I'm the Director of the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. We have been implementing school-based violence prevention strategies since 2011 with a particular focus on teen dating violence prevention. And so right now, we're working in three Baltimore City, Baltimore City Public High Schools. That includes Augusta Falls Savage, Renaissance Academy, and Achievement Academy. And through our school-based violence prevention work, we implement a youth development component, which includes the recruitment of youth ambassadors from the partner schools. And what we do is we train those youth ambassadors on teen dating violence prevention, outreach, and peer education so that they're able to reinforce the messages that the teenagers in our school-based student curriculum sessions are receiving. They reinforce those messages through social media and marketing, as well as event planning in those communities where those schools are located. We also conduct weekly peer support, education, and support to young people who have been referred by school administrators, who have been identified as young people who have been exposed to teen dating violence or IPV through witnessing. We provide after-school programming and mentoring. Again, this is another activity that allows us to reinforce those messages that young people are receiving through the instructional day, through social and emotional learning exercises. Those activities include strategies designed to increase help-seeking skills when young people are actually facing or involved in relationships that are abusive. It also helps them to identify a healthy relationship from an unhealthy relationship. And I think the good thing about the evidence-based program that we are implementing is that it is designed to address both victimization and perpetration. So we do work with individuals who are actually committing these acts and develop strategies around conflict management skills, as well as emotion identification and emotion regulation. And then, in addition to that, we do provide opportunities to connect them to other therapeutic services as needed. The implementation of the Safe Dates and Dating Matters Program is an evidence-based, evidence-formed, evidence-informed initiative that was funded by the CDC from 2011 to 2018. And what that program has essentially shown results in terms of effectiveness is that it not only helps prevent teen dating violence, but it also has been effective in looking at other forms of violence as well. Through that initiative, we have a training that we offer to teachers specifically around the prevention of teen dating violence. But we also, through our school-based violence prevention, offer training to educators around mental health first aid and trauma-informed care. In addition to that, those strategies, we do a school-wide activity to really impact school climate and to reach those students who may not be participating in the after-school programming and the curriculum sessions. The school-wide annual events is an opportunity, again, to reinforce those messages that are communicated and taught to young people that are participating in the curriculum sessions. So that is our primary prevention approach to addressing teen dating violence and other forms of violence against women and others. In addition to that, we do have a victim service program. And so we're providing direct support to people who have been experiencing multiple forms of violence, including intimate partner violence and teen dating violence. And so through that program, we provide housing assistance and relocation services, transportation assistance and peer support. We do emergency assistance as well for people who may be fleeing abusive relationships and are looking for some semblance of independence and self-sufficiency. So we do provide opportunities for them to leave those relationships and then become independent. And in addition to that, we help with applying for victims' compensation. So out of our victim services program roughly around... So out of our victim services program, roughly around 93 women and girls who have come through our program, they, we have about 45% who have presented with domestic or family violence. 28% have experienced bullying, 26% have experienced physical assault. We have 23% experiencing sexual assault and abuse. 18% of those who have been, women and girls who have enrolled in our program have presented with child physical abuse and neglect. 9% were survivors of nine fatal shootings. 9% were stalked or harassed. 6% were directly involved in teen dating violence, 5% robbery, and 4% burglary. And so what this really tells us is that there is a ongoing need to integrate comprehensive healthy relationship education through our, our social and emotional learning through our school-based violence prevention, but it also tells us that we need to continue to strengthen our efforts around providing supports to victims.
I appreciate your updated report. We're going to move on to what looks like our largest presentation, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Safety Engagement.
Thank you Chairwoman McCray and honorable members of the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. My name is Stephanie Mavronas, and I serve as the Director of MONC, and I'm joined here today by Wendy Lee, our Intimate Partner Violence Prevention Deputy Director, Mark Mason, our Victim Services Associate Director, and John Hoffman, our Policy and Research Associate Director. MONC is thankful for the continued dialogue, support, and efforts of all agencies and community-based organizations working collaboratively to reduce violence against women in Baltimore in line with Mayor Scott's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. We understand that our supports and services have to reach those who are most vulnerable, particularly women and girls, specifically our Black women and girls in Baltimore. MONC is committed, as an agency, to reducing violence against women, and we welcome the opportunity to provide an update. We can move ahead to the next slide, which is a bit of an overview. While violence against women remains a significant and urgent problem, we have seen some progress. Deputy Director Lee will talk more about this in just a moment. We've seen reductions in intimate partner violence or IPV, as well as other types of violence against women. We'll also outline the progress that we've made in strengthening inter-agency coordination and expanding violence prevention programming across our portfolio. This includes ongoing collaborations focused on victims of sexual assault, human trafficking, and intimate partner, and gun violence. MONC's Victim Services Lane was established as a central hub for victims, working with government and community-based partners to strengthen coordination and improve mechanisms for sharing information to ensure that no victim or survivor in Baltimore falls through the gaps. MONC's Victim Services Lane serves as a non-law enforcement point of contact to make referrals to resources, facilitating access to wraparound services that promote well-being of individuals' physical, mental, and emotional health. In addition, our gun violence prevention and community engagement lanes play a role in this effort as well, specifically with a focus on reducing violence against women and girls. And so I'll turn it over now to Wendy Lee to walk through some of the data, and then we'll speak more later about where we go from here. Wendy?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, other distinguished members of the committee, those in chambers, and those who have joined us by phone. I apologize for my voice, I have a little bit of a cold here. So I want to start off by just level-setting in terms of terminology that I may use within this presentation. So when I'm reporting on any data, I'm reporting intimate partner violence only, and, and there is a difference when I say intimate partner violence, I may also say domestic violence, which we know includes family violence and other forms of violence, but the data is, does reflected in our MONC presentation, is IPV. But you'll hear me use those terms interchangeably. So the first slide is IPV data. So when I was here the last time in January 2023, we were talking about this issue, and we realized that we have a burning platform, a real need to make sure that we're all focused on this. We ended 2023 with a drop in the number of IPV crime victims, and I'm reporting crime data. Let me be real clear that I am not saying that there is not still a rise in IPV with any of this data, because we know that some victims will not necessarily seek law enforcement assistance, so this is crime data that I'm reporting. And there was a drop in the number of IPV crime victims, as well as a decline in the IPV proportion of violent crime. So what am I, what do I mean by that? At the end of 2023, we saw a 14% reduction in total DV violent crime. And if you look at this chart, it's, it goes from aggravated assault down to shootings, those are the IPV violent crimes. There was a 14% decrease from 2022 to 2023. All IPV violent crime, we saw an 11% decrease at the end of 2023, the first year that I was able to attend this convening. One of the benchmarks that we look at from a crime statistic in relation to IPV is what is the percentage of domestic violence, violent crime to the total presented, percentage of violent crime, all violent crime, even not, non-IPV. We're looking to reduce that number, the national average is 15%. In 2021, Baltimore City's domestic violence violent crime percentage to total violent crime for DV was 21%. We are seeing a steady decrease. 2022 went down to 19%, 17% in 2023, and I'm fully confident that we are moving towards that national average for Baltimore. Next slide, please. So what does it look like in 2024? And these stats are through January through June 15th of this year. The downward trend in IPV crime victims continues in terms of crime data. We're still seeing, as of June 15th, a 12% decrease in IPV-related violent crime. And all IPV crime, we're seeing a 10% decrease. There are some increases, while some of these categories, we have smaller numbers. Shootings, we did see an increase, went from four to nine, so we're watching the, we do need to pay attention to these shootings with respect to IPV. And then we also saw one additional in auto theft over last year this time. Next slide, please. As Director Mavronas mentioned, we do need to make sure that we understand when we're crafting our strategies for Baltimore City, that the, there is a disproportionate impact to female Black victims across IPV. In 2022, as this data reflects, when we look at the aggravated assaults, all victims, 86% were Black, 71% were female. Wapes, 55% were Black victims, with 100% being female, and 82% were Black victims for common assaults, which you'll see most of our domestic violence incidences under the common assaults. 75% were female. Similar statistics for 2023 in terms of the impact to this particular target. Next slide, please. So that's the who, now we want to talk about the where. So we were able to take a look at our ZIP Code data, as reported by this crime data, to determine where we're seeing high incidences of victimization for females, IPV-related. And these are the top five ZIP Codes that we've been seeing, seeing trends around frequency. 21217, 21215, 21206, 21216, and 21223. So that is spread out across Central, Northwest, Northeast, Southwest Baltimore, and South Baltimore. However, there are commonalities as it relates to the social determinants of health and the, the, the impact of some of the victims that are in these communities, either marginalized communities, underserved communities, areas that need more attention in terms of resource and access to resources, education about those issues. We are seeing that some of these ZIP Codes definitely need more of a focus. Next slide. This graph or, or charts, pie charts, are really just diving down a little bit more into these ZIP Codes that I mentioned to determine what types of crimes are prevalent. And obviously, with the violent crime, aggravated assaults, we're going to see the most numbers there, particularly with strangulation being a, a felony now, and we're seeing more strangulation within our IPV cases, you're going to see the aggravated assault counts going up, and we are seeing that in these ZIP Codes. We're also seeing an increase in robberies, so domestic violence-related robberies, that we want to make sure that we're paying attention to as we speak about IPV and violence against women. So aggravated assaults and robberies are noted as trends. Next slide, please. This particular slide is something that we were working in partnership with our Baltimore Police Department, which I have to say, I really appreciate our Baltimore Police Department, they're very active in our collaborative, in terms of our Domestic Violence Coordinated Council, Major Boyd and all of her team, as well as DC Jones. What I will say here is that we're talking about IPV incidences and trying to understand within the five target zones, target enforcement zones for BPD, what's happening with IPV. And so just conversations yesterday about the zones that are experiencing the highest rates of IPV and the type of IPV, and I have identified two zones where we can partner, not only with enforcement, but with engagement and awareness within those communities to make sure that they understand the resources that are available, not just within MONC, but as was mentioned by Director Burgess, across the, the city systems. Aggravated assault and common assaults, you can see common assaults being the, the highest number there, Zones 1 and Zones 5. Next slide, please. Okay, so that, those are the trends, some of the data, now let's talk a little bit about the response. And I'm really keying in on the systems response from a MONC perspective, but I wanted to just share this graph, continuum here, not going to go into all of it, but when we talk about IPV and from a systems response, we are looking at what are those help-seeking behaviors of our survivors? Where are their opportunities to understand their cry for help? Are they calling the hotlines? Are they calling 911 for service or dispatch? Are they going to the courts for a protective order? Are they coming back or failing to appear for their final protective order? What are those help-seeking behaviors so we can identify particular measures that we've been able to use as surveillance measures to determine the trends? Then, look at the system response across many of the agencies. Our law enforcement, BPD, and, and the Sheriff's Office, they have the responsibility of serving those protective orders. Interim, that are sought after hours by our victims who are seeking assistance, and then those that are done during court hours for temporary and final protective orders. What are the rates of service? Our warrants, how often are those being served? What's the cycle time? Firearms fees, those are the things within law enforcement. But it doesn't stop there, it's also our Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, understanding where there are violations of court dispositions, either to attend abuse intervention programming and/or repeat offenders, understanding how we come together as a collective system to make sure that there's accountability for those who are causing harm. Of course, the court system is a huge piece of this, making sure that those repeat offenders that are coming back repeatedly, that they're also being held accountable for their repeat offenses. Final protective orders, if we're, if our victims are asking for those and they're being denied, we want to see if there are trends as to why they're being denied. Dismissed for lack of appearance is different than being denied for failure to present a reason for a final protective order. And lastly, our tremendous Herculean community-based organizations that are doing the work to connect those victims to services that are, that they are in need. We have a very, very great program across Baltimore City, the Lethality Assessment Protocol. Our officers, patrol officers are going out trying to do those assessments, and those referrals go back to agencies like the House of Ruth, Turnaround, and HANA. All of this to really take a look at the, the data I shared earlier about reductions in crime, reductions in fatalities, making sure that we're addressing accountability as well as services. Next slide. And so I won't go into a lot of detail here, some of these things were already measured or mentioned, but from a systems perspective, what we currently are using as our surveillance measures is a lot of the crime data. And so you can see here, I talked about the LAP assessments. We want to make sure that when our officers, as, as DC Jones mentioned, BPD Policy 711 states when our patrol officers go out and respond to IPV-related incident, that they do a LAP screen, an assessment, a risk assessment around danger, the propensity to actually be killed. And those should be done on every IPV-related crime. We want to make sure that their crime rates are pretty much aligning with the number of LAP assessments completed by our officers, and we're seeing tight correlation there. We want to make sure, like I said before, that those orders, whether it's an interim protective order or a final protective order, are being served. And we know that there are challenges with DV offenders that could, that have been asked to leave the home, they can be very transient, and trying to get service on them can be very tricky. So we know that's a factor why sometimes the service rate may not be as high as we'd like, but we want to know what those barriers are. We want to be able to help agencies understand, or our victims understand, how to help systems agencies be more successful with service. Warrants, again, looking at cycle time, looking at things like how many warrants were received and served, and what the service rate is. And then lastly, the accuracy of those LAP assessments completed by our BPD to make sure that all of the information is there, so that our community-based organization, particularly the House of Ruth and HANA and soon to be Turnaround, can actually reach those survivors, good phone numbers, the completed assessment was done, and the risk was actually determined accurately. Next slide. Next, so this is really a focus on the IPV prevention work within MONC. I have a very small team, I do have an IPV Prevention Court liaison that is stationed at the East Side Courthouse to help walk-in victims with their efforts to file a petition for a protective order, whether it be initial or follow-up, helping them maneuver the court experience, whether it's meeting with someone at the House of Ruth who's stationed there, or meeting with the State Attorney's Office who might be there that they may have questions about. And she's there three days a week at East Side Courthouse. I also have an IPV Prevention Coordinator that is focused on many of the other portions of the work that we're, we're touching to supplement many of the agencies here. I want to talk a little bit about data access really quickly, so that is a very, very big area of what we're trying to do, is understand where the data access, where the data we need is, is housed and how we can have access to it, so that we can continue to have increased access, automate our IPV stat, do more of an analysis of what's happening, and see those trends in real time. I spoke a little bit about the high-risk geographic insights and the collaboration with BPD, that's because we are actually looking at the data together, the data is key to understanding what's going on. I know John Hoffman is here and can talk a little bit more about IPV stat if there are any follow-up questions. In terms of AIP programming, so that's the Abuse Intervention Programming that was mentioned by some of my colleagues here, and it is important that we not just focus on survivors and victims and hold them solely responsible for their safety and well-being, that we actually look at both sides of this equation, because IPV is cyclical. If not that victim, there will be another, if we do not address those who are causing harm. And so MONC recognizes the importance of investing ARPA funding in abuse intervention programming, such as the House of Ruth Gateway Project, which was mentioned here before, to help with capacity building. There are others that we invested in as well. My Come in Place with, My Come in Place Alpha Project, expanding their services here in Baltimore City, working to improve upon their victim supports and offering virtual support groups to female survivors of IPV. Turnaround, who has the Dating Matters Program as well. Turnaround has partnered with the Department of Juvenile Services to go behind the wall and do some of the Dating Matter, Dating Matters courses to our youth that are in detention. They've also been working with a number of agencies and communities, like Hickey and, and Children's Home and Nexus Woodburn, and it could go on, but they've been out there really trying to get that program to be able to reach those at risk for perpetration, as well as those who are at risk for victims, being a victim. In addition, we've now partnered with another agency called Harbell, which has a program that's focused on youth in detention in community, to bring their program of enrichment to boys and youth who are at risk of being perpetrators and/or being victims. So there is an enhanced focus on risks, on youth, as in terms of risk, and abuse intervention programming has, as was said before, proven to be a good use of time to help prevent IPV. Community engagement, so we do focus a lot on doing prevention workshops in areas to supplement what was already shared by Director Burgess, but what the IPV team has done is try to make sure that we're focused on primary prevention, but also secondary prevention as well. And so we've delivered workshops also on healthy and unhealthy relationships, such as the introduction of DV, IPV 101, what is that? IPV and the LGBTQ+ community, what are the differences? The intersectionality and understanding that IPV is not the same for everyone, and IPV is not always the black eye, there is more to it, and that we have to understand what that looks like to refer and respond appropriately in a culturally sensitive way. We've also been partnering with other agencies to bring this training to their staff, such as Springboard. We've trained some of their agent, the agency staff around what IPV is, particularly in the LGBT community. We've worked with organizations that focus on mentoring youth, like I Am Mentality, Steps Towards Success, He's My Brother, those are some, just a few of the agencies that have asked for us to come out and talk about what IPV is at a, at a one-on-one level, because awareness is what's the first step of understanding what it is, to be able to respond to it appropriately and refer if you're not the one to provide the services. We've also had the Peace Mobile out to show a focus on, when we talk about peace, we talk about peace in the home, too. Peace in the community and peace in the home are equally important, and sometimes we don't see what's happening in the home, but we want the Peace Mobile to be present. We provide supports on the Peace Mobile to refer. those who are interested in understanding what IPV is with resources that we bring from the community, as well as resources from our organizations that we work with closely, like Turnaround and House of Ruth. In addition to that, we have been invited to speak on different panels. We are partnering with different agencies to really focus on how do we improve our awareness of who actually are our victims? What is their help-seeking behaviors? And so I'll talk a little bit more about what's on the horizon. But we've been invited to speak on different panels and be a part of some of the work that the House of Ruth, Turnaround, My Covenant Place, and many other agencies are doing. Everything that we do try to do, we want to bring in our partners that are here in the room. So if we're doing speaking engagements or partnerships on campus like Hoppin University, we try to make sure that we have some of our partners that are coming along with us. Wrapping up really quickly, next, oh, one more, sorry. Coordinated System Response, this is the one I love the most. So our Coordinated System Response, we have a three-legged stool to our collaboratives, is what I call it. We have our Domestic Violence Coordinating Council. Thank you, Madam Chair McCray, for being one of our chairs. We have co-chairs. Lisa Nitsch from the House of Ruth is the other co-chair. That is our governing body that will take recommendations from the other two, which is the Domestic Violence High-Risk Team and the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. That's the three legs of our stool with very different focus sites. Domestic Violence Fatality Review, obviously someone has lost their life, and we are doing a detailed analysis of that case and providing recommendations to the Coordinating Council. The cases that were reviewed this year since the last convening, we've also identified the need to do more assessments, particularly within the hospitals, and doing it in a consistent manner, not just, as was said, those who we think may be victims, but then understanding that there are other forms of hidden IPV beyond the physical bruises. We've also talked about some other recommendations that have been forwarded to the council. And then the High-Risk Team, that's a newer one. We're looking, and so we don't want to wait till a case ends up as a fatality review. We want to be able to look at these cases that have suspicious indicators, high-risk variables, and talk as a collaborative team on what we need to do to provide safety and accountability to those who are involved. This particular team is new. The goal is to kick this team off by the end of this year, hopefully by the beginning of the fall. And that will be individual cases that we've identified to come around the table and talk about how we provide a systems response. Really quickly, I think I'm going to skip a little bit through the data because it was presented with the Police Department and also with our Health Department. But this slide is just really depicting IPV crime data and comparing it to non-IPV crime data because I do want us to understand that while we talk about violence against women, and I'm here to be the biggest advocate about IPV, that crimes against women go beyond that. And actually, the percentage of crime victims, police stats only, reflect that about nearly two-thirds of all reported female victims of violent crime are not IPV. And so we got to make sure that we have a coordinated effort that reaches beyond just IPV to understand that there are increases in crimes against women as a whole. This slide, I'll only point out two of them. Robbery, carjacking, which is right in the middle of the slides. This is a comparison of 2023 to 2024. While the numbers may seem low in comparison to others, they're victims, they're people, they're opportunities for us to improve the trend that we're seeing. So robberies and carjacking, female victims in 2023, we saw 54, which is about 23% of all the robbery, carjacking victims. In 2024, through June, we saw 93. So that's going up. While the total number of carjackings is going down, the percentage of female victims has gone up. Also want to call out the robberies. Those also went up by count for female victims year over year. And I want to point out the rapes. Rapes went up as well for female victims overall. Again, looking at the total, total female victims in 2023 was about 40% of crime, violent crime. And in 2024, it's gone up to 42%, even though the count is a little bit lower. Takeaways, female homicides and non, next slide, please. Female homicides and non-fatal shootings have declined in 2024, and it is mirroring the drop in male victims. We've seen a 50% decrease in the number of female homicides from 2023. For non-fatal shootings, there is also a decline as well, but the proportion of female victims has remained steady around 15%. As I just mentioned, next slide. Female carjacking victims are significantly up. The total victim count is up, and the percentage is up. And we also see an increase in the female robbery victims, and the proportion of females is up. Next slide. The number of women who are experiencing aggravated assault, that is down, but the proportion of female victims continues to increase. And we have a visualization of the last four years where the percentage points have gone up. I'm actually going to turn it over to one of my partners. I think Mark might be up next.
Thank you, Wendy. Just, I'll cover these last final slides very briefly, really just to build on what the Deputy Director said. We know that violence against women is not limited to intimate partner violence, and so we have to discuss the other ways we can stay coordinated in our efforts to serve women and girls. The first thing I'll highlight here beyond intimate partner violence prevention specifically is our coordinated victim services effort. We've heard a little bit in the other presentations about victim services. We are glad to partner closely with the Baltimore Police Department and State's Attorney's Office Victim Service Units to make sure that we have an actual interagency process map. We can talk about which agencies play which role and really ensure that handoff is appropriate. And no one feels like they're falling through the gaps. We've included on this slide some of the data just showing the breakdown of support provided to female victims. And so we provided support, our Victim Services Team, to 269 female victims over the last 18 months, which included 131 domestic violence-related cases. This is approximately two-thirds of total victims served. Next slide. Our team serves both primary and secondary victims as well as Baltimore City Visitation Center clients. So the high total number of female victims served partly reflects the secondary victims we've assisted. They are disproportionately female, 63 female versus 17 male served. In many cases, the secondary victims that we serve may be the mothers of primary victims. Next slide. MONC, as you may be aware, is a leader on anti-human trafficking and sexual assault response. This work is led by Tom Stack on the MONC team. We coordinate around the city's Human Trafficking Collaborative and the Sexual Assault Response Team. MONC also coordinates services for survivors of human trafficking and sexual assault through the collaborative and this team. We also facilitate trainings for first responders in the city on the signs of human trafficking, sexual assault, and how to appropriately support survivors. I also, on the next slide, want to highlight the city's Blue Dot Human Trafficking Initiative with Mercy Medical Center and the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. This Blue Dot program won the Presidential Award for Extraordinary Efforts to Combat Trafficking. This initiative strives to ensure that no survivors of trafficking fall through the cracks and that all identified survivors receive services. We've had 107 Blue Dot cases since the last hearing, and so that's something we wanted to note here. And then finally, I'll highlight some of our efforts around gun violence prevention and returning citizens on the next slide. In the past year alone, MONC, in collaboration with the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Wreckin Parks, launched Returning Citizens Behind the Wall Pre-Release Employment Initiative. This initiative started out primarily just working with our male returning citizens. We've recently, through partnership with DPSCS, expanded that to support women for the first time and are looking at ways we can continue to make sure we have specific supports for our women returning citizens and that they also have safe return planning as they make that transition home. MONC has also invested in Baltimore's community violence intervention ecosystem, making sure we also have non-law enforcement interventions that speak to and focus on women. We're also proud to report the presence of women in leadership roles within Safe Streets, including three female site directors at this time. Safe Streets also conducted an anti-human trafficking training in 2023 and will hold an intimate partner violence prevention training. And so to the point the Deputy Director made earlier, we don't know what's happening inside the home, but we want to make sure as we're reaching our highest risk with other messages that we can think about how we integrate the messages of IPV and anti-human trafficking into that as well. And then with the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, we've also noted that there are 11 women currently receiving GVRs services. Okay. I think, Wendy, did you have some next steps to share here?
Really quickly, on the horizon for IPV, in addition to the work of the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, which I said is focused on improving risk assessments within the hospital system, reaching youth in marginalized communities in more culturally sensitive and responsive ways, and providing a framework for us to have real-time conversation about high-risk cases and making sure that we bring training and technical assistance to our communities so that we're involving our thinking around intimate partner violence. Those are all on the horizon. In addition to partnership conversations with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, we're looking at bringing some of the IPV awareness to the CAP Centers because we know folks are victims that may not be saying they're victims, but as you assess for other social determinants of health, you realize that there is hidden IPV. And so making sure that those staff members are aware of how to recognize, respond, and refer. CAP Center and Head Start staff are areas of focus that we're speaking about between our agencies. IPV prevention, as was mentioned by Director Burgess, getting into the schools. So with MONC, CDI, School Based Pilot in those four high schools, we want to make sure that, similar to what she had mentioned, that those student ambassadors have an understanding of what that looks like and can be vocal messengers within the school about how we can prevent IPV. There are two grant-funded projects that we're working in collaboration with the University of Maryland Baltimore Center for Violence Prevention. We did put in a grant application, fingers crossed that we'll get it. It is in reference to really strengthening our data and understanding the help-seeking behaviors from an intersectional and culturally sensitive lens to understand the impact of LGBT, geographic factors, gender-based, language needs. What culturally sensitive data is my point, to make sure that we understand that so that we can develop the strategies that make the most sense and are responsive to the needs of the community. Another was focused on, another grant opportunity that we pursued and hopefully will, fingers crossed, get that one as well, was transitional housing for LGBTQ+ IPV survivors and working with some of our partners at Safe Haven, Beyond Health, and Free State Justice to make sure that we're strengthening the ability to provide housing services for LGBTQ+ IPV survivors. And then finally, also with the Baltimore City Public School System, working with their whole child services and supports. We recognize through our conversations, through our hospital-based programs and HVIP, some of those hospitals were saying they're seeing an increase in IPV and bullying. And so wanting to make sure that people understand the law around bullying, the resources that are available. That's shown up in the EDs as well now, and we want to make sure that our school systems are, they have a lot of information that is not necessarily in community. So we've made the connection to bring those supports to families that are coming into the hospital, and we want to expand on that to other agencies as well.
I think we can leave it there. The next finals. Yeah. Okay. So, agency-wide, we're committed to continuing the collaborative work needed to strengthen interagency coordination and close gaps. We've started that work. We think there's a lot of work to continue doing there. This includes using our Victim Services Working Group to implement key reforms in this area. By the end of 2024, MONC aims to establish a working group with city agencies and community-based providers in this space to collaboratively identify and close gaps within our victim services network citywide. And then there is one final slide just about areas outside of victim services that we've identified for future collaboration, both with our law enforcement partners and based on what we're seeing in the data. And so I believe that is the ending of our slide deck and happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate the thorough presentation. Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, I'm not sure if someone's here that you want to stand by to report? Or is someone here?
They do.
Okay. Is anyone present from the Sheriff's Office today? Okay. So we're going to get right into questions. I'm going to do my best to center my brain. I'm going to start with, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to start with BPD first. I could scratch that one out because it wasn't answered. The first thing is more so of a committee request. If you can give me a comparison, so we have the year-to-date numbers. If you can give me a comparison to the same amount of time, somewhat of what MONC did for 2023, so I can actually have some type of, to just go back and forth with the numbers that you have. I want to talk specifically about the number of females. These are questions that have been asked at previous hearings, about the number of females that have been a victim of a homicide or shooting specifically this year. How many of these cases stem from retaliation in reference to some other street-level violence that occurred?
Good morning. Lieutenant Colonel Steve Homan, I'm the Deputy Chief Detectives for BPD. I oversee homicide. So so far, year-to-date, there's been eight victims, female victims of homicide, year-to-date. Of those, we're categorizing two of those as domestic violence-related. One may not show on the stats that were previously shown because it's still currently open. However, suspect has been identified in that, and the suspect is deceased, so it hasn't been closed yet. In terms of your question related to retaliation, none of the cases are indicative of retaliation based on like street-level, you know, conflict or anything like that. Of the eight cases, five are closed, including, you know, the two that I mentioned.
So regarding the non-fatal shootings, and I'll speak towards that. So far this year, we had our first non-fatal shooting on January 1st. It was domestic-related. Our last was, excuse me, May the 4th. Of those nine cases, all of those cases are closed. I would say that unfortunately, I do not have the background of if there was any precursors before the shooting, but we will follow up with that and provide that to you.
Okay. As far as, as far as our victims, how many, and just going back to victims of homicide or shootings, how many of the folks were determined to be repeat violent offenders or people who are known to law enforcement because of previous past criminal activity?
You mean in terms of those specific female-related cases?
Yes.
I would have to, I would have to follow up and break down those cases individually. So like I can tell you, in general, right, we do an analysis of all homicide. So the suspects for homicide, 80% have prior records. 31% are on PMP at the time of the incident. 20% have been arrested for violent crimes previously. About 3% are prior homicide suspects. 43% have prior drug arrests. 14, like I said, 14% are on PMP for gun crimes, and 54% had been previously arrested for gun crimes. I also have that same information for the victims. Again, that's overall homicides, if you like that as well.
Can you narrow it down specifically for the cases for women and girls?
We certainly can. I'll follow up with that.
As far as our young women, our girls, 17 years of age and under, what is the plan specifically? And I'm thinking about the, one of the most recent ones, the young lady in Fells Point, who got shot twice, twice in a wrist. What is the updated plan to help reduce the current for young girls becoming victims?
So specifically for BPD, I know that we have been working with the Health Department. I think we realize, as well as with the school police in reference to intimate partner and dating violence education. I know that it's something that through our Victim Services Unit, it is something that we're looking to expand this unit as far as. it is something that we're looking to expand this unit as far as, I think we're looking from 11 individuals to almost doubling this by the end of the year. I can pass this to Director Chardelle Rose. Chardelle, if you have anything in reference to specifically for younger females. But I don't have anything right now, other than working with our partners for that.
I want to just piggyback on what he said. So we're expanding the Victim Services Unit.
I'm sorry, can you go to the mic? Just state your name and the agency, and you just got to hit that button, make sure it's right.
Is it on? So I'm Chardelle Rose. I'm the Director of Victim Services for BPD. I mean, just to expand on what he said, we are expanding our unit to include a new team for the Special Victims Team that will focus more on crimes against women. Currently, right now, I have one coordinator that works with victims of DV and IPV. This month and next month, we'll be bringing on three more. So we'll have a total of four. We're also going to include two more coordinators to cover sex offense. And like he said, just coordinating with a lot of the community agencies to get on the prevention side. Like I said, this is a new team, so we're not there yet. But that is part of the expansion.
I will say that, you know, I don't have the numbers specifically for homicide, but of the non, the non-non-fatal shooting, the average age is 38 years of age for the victim. I understand your question, but yes, you know, and looking at those cases, the average age was 38.
And finally, I would just add that my counterpart, Lieutenant Colonel Herzog, who oversees the non-fatal shooting investigations, we meet with Director Rose's team weekly to talk specifically about homicide, shooting cases, the SIS cases, child abuse, sex offenses, to ensure that an advocate is working on every case. In fact, we are, we've implemented a program in homicide where Chardelle's team, Director Rose's team, goes out with the detective to do the initial family meeting, the notification, next-again notification. So there's a lot of coordination there and there's staffing and capabilities built out. That'll just expand. So again, it's, it's on our radar every single week.
I'm going to the slide. It's something that I speak with folks about all the time. A lot of times when we talk about violence against women, it's natural for people to say domestic violence, intimate partner violence. But violence against women, just like this slide says, and girls. Nearly two-thirds of all reported female victims of violent crime are not IPV. So in previous hearings, BPD spoke about systems that they were bringing through. And I know that you're saying, hey, we have this new team that's coming through. I just wanted to follow up on just a few items that we had. I wanted to know, before I move on to another agency, how are you all measuring the effectiveness of your current strategies to just, to mitigate the number of women and girls, homicide and non-fatal shooting victims? And at this time, where is the agency at in building out that system? It was very broad in past hearings that, hey, we're building out systems. But I just want to know, like, where is the agency at in that development process? And where are you at in building out your new case management system that you spoke about in past hearings?
Yes, ma'am. So I know under Director Cheryl Ritter, we're exposing, you know, we're improving upon our community policing with our neighborhood policing plans and reaching out, identifying this subset of crime as it relates to women. We're also a part of, as you know, the 30 by 30 Initiative, where we're, as an agency, trying to improve upon, you know, female representation in the agency, realizing that, you know, this brings upon another aspect in reference to de-escalation of forced use. So we take this seriously. I think, you know, this is something that we still should probably fine-tune. Because I think, for me, when we talk about specific crimes and crime categories, while we would love to focus specifically on the gender of it, I think sometimes we get caught up in the place of it. We know about homicide, shootings, robberies in a specific area. And while we try to entertain victimology, I don't think we boil it down to enough of females, where we say, we've got a pattern, cluster, trend going on here. How do we address the pattern, cluster, or trend? So I think that's one thing that we probably need to improve upon and look at best practices of how we do need to address it. But normally, for most district commanders, they are looking at the crime itself and not the specificity of the gender, where this is probably something that we definitely need to kick the tires on. Because if there is a disproportionate amount of these incidents occurring that do not seem to be IPV, then I would ask in my mind, the question is, is it because the suspect is just, is it, is it a crime of opportunity? Or is it a crime because I'm seeing the potential female victim as an easier target? I don't know. So this is something that we probably need to kick the tires on. But then that's also getting into the mindset of the criminal offender themselves. I've seen it myself personally. When I was the district commander for the Central, we were having carjackings and squeegee issues around MLK and Drew Hill Avenue. Having the, the opportunity to have an unmarked vehicle, I would go in these areas and I would watch specific individuals who were out there. I could see them, their eyes. They are deciding who is the victim. If, if, if that makes any sense to you. They are looking at the person of opportunity. Is the person making eye contact with me? Are they white-knuckling the steering wheel? It's a whole process that they go through as well to see who would be the most optimal, the most optimal victim at that time. So I think that's something that's going to take some looking into the data. But I think it's something that, I think, we should, we could, and we look into a little deeper. Yes.
You're going to have to look into it a little deeper because I don't, I don't need any data to know that, hey, somebody's looking at a woman and they're targeting that woman. And if we're talking about, hey, black women, we have this data that shows that black women are overwhelmingly victims here. And we could see it on TV. We see all these little fake studies that folks do because black women are typically the helpers that everybody goes up to when they need help. Find a black woman. And that's the same thing that folks are doing. That's the same thing the criminals are doing. So yeah, I don't think we have to look too hard in it. But I, I appreciate your response. I appreciate your response. Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Chair McCray, not only for holding these hearings on a continual basis, but also for some of your questions today. One of the questions you brought up was one of the ones I had, which was the interplay between folks who have already been in the system and been involved in other cases, and what cases are involved in terms of violence against women. So I'm glad that that unfortunate reality came up. One other piece that I think is worth us talking about a little bit more, and visually seeing the, the map and the zip codes tells a lot. I will say, out of the four, the five zip codes are actually covered by our council district. And you mentioned, you know, social determinants of health. And we look at the role that, that poverty plays as it relates to, to crime. That's just more, more of a comment. But I'm also curious as to how we drill down on not only the victims, but also how we're addressing offenders in, in this regard. So I'd be curious about, about that side of things.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you want to take that? Wendy?
Thank you for your question. And so as I mentioned before, the investments that we've made through our ARPA dollars is to make sure that we help build capacity within those abuse intervention programs that are certified in Baltimore City. So that's the Gateway Project with the House of Ruth and Turnarounds got a program as well, and then Harbell, and there's one other that I'm losing right now. But there are four. My covenant place, thank you. And so making sure that they have the support from, from a capacity building. But that's only a piece of the problem, right? So we know that sometimes folks are court-ordered, but they don't attend, right? So what happens when they don't attend this abuse intervention program to get the, the tools that they need to change their behavior? So we have to be able to see those numbers of violations and understanding what are the consequences of those. So that's the data that MONC is working maybe to have more access to. But there are other parts of the, the system that I mentioned before that have to really make sure that we're all coordinated in that. I heard DC Jones talk about the repeat offenders and what they're doing to try to make sure that they hold them accountable. But ultimately, it does come back to what are our courts doing as well to make sure that there's consequences? And those are conversations that we're trying to have with the courts and the judicial system. I know Jesse's working really hard with that too, as it relates to DV.
Well, thank you for that. And then just a couple of follow-ups. So obviously, a win or an improvement would be a decrease in some of these cases. But also, how do you judge effectiveness of some of the programs or partners that you've mentioned thus far?
In terms of MONC judging the effectiveness, we are, like I said, our surveillance measures right now are really at that crime data perspective. But within the DVCC, we're looking at each of those agencies that come forward. What are your measures of success within parole and probation so that we can put that on a radar from a holistic perspective? As well as our community-based organizations? What are your measures of success? So that is definitely work in progress for us.
Then one last piece in terms of categories of crime, and I'm sure police can also chime in on this one. I know it's not the leading category, but arson is a very alarming one. And there have been some high-profile cases. Can you talk a little bit about, about arson and what you're seeing? I mean, again, I know the numbers are single digits, but it's still an alarming case because it also affects others. Can you talk about that? And, and one thing I'll also add, thinking about our zip codes, those are also problems we see in these same zip codes too.
So we can, again, Lieutenant Colonel Homan for SIS, we can take a deeper dive into the arson to look at the victimology on, on that. But in general, so far this year, fortunately, we really have not seen any pattern-related arson cases. I, I will say that some of you may be aware that we've recently formed kind of a co-location partnership with the Fire Department's Bureau of Investigation. So it's the Fire Department that determines an arson. It's the Police Department that investigates it. Those two teams are now co-located. So they're sharing information on a daily basis, meeting, reviewing the cases on a daily basis. And, you know, just in terms of clearance rates, you know, we're in the high twenties for clearance rate for arson, which is above the national average. So in, in terms of the direction, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with, with how the arson investigations are going. But again, specifically to the victimology, we'd have to take a little deeper dive to analyze that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. I want to piggyback off of these zip codes. I'm pretty sure many of you, many of you know that 21206 is mine. So the, the, the first thing I want to know is that I'm seeing two, two maps. And I see these five BPD Target Enforcement Zones. How many of those zones fall into the five zip codes where we can clearly see the violent crimes are happening with DV victims?
Question, how many of the, say, I'm sorry, how many of the what?
How many of the zip codes that are listed on, I don't have, they don't have page numbers on this map? How many of those are, how many of those zip codes are within these, what's displayed here as the targeted enforcement zones?
Okay. I don't know if I can pivot to DC Jones to speak about the target zones. I do not have the breakdown of the target zones.
What I will say for that is for us, we don't break it down by the zip code. So that would have to be a follow-up for us. What I will say is highlighted in Wendy's report was the increases in Zone Ones and Zone Fives. What I will say is Zone One boundaries are Clifton Avenue, Edding Street, Riggs Avenue, and North Bentlow. Basically, that would be consistent of like, the Western District. For Zone Five, this is like that Monument Street, Eastern Avenue, Southeast District areas. The boundaries for that would be East Federal Street, Edison Highway to Highland, East Baltimore Street, and North Patterson Park Avenue. So that's how we break down the mayor's zones in reference to our targeted enforcement, specifically to the, the zip codes. We would have to follow up to say which zip codes where they fall in there.
Thank you. So I, I may not know this particular part of the city, but I know this particular part of the city. And if we know, they say this is happening in 21206, and we have established zones, if we know this is happening here, we know this is happening in the other four areas, I don't know if they're overlaid. What is the plan for the, for the, for where it's happening that's not within the zones? Because I, I can see that 21206 is not overlaid within, I think you said it was like Zone Target Area Five. I know that's a little bit further southeast. It comes up a little bit, but it's nowhere in here. So what is the plan for when we establish that this is happening within these areas? How are we, how are we analyzing this data to target those areas to continue to bring down the numbers and keep having the success that you guys are already having?
Yep. So I, I think if I'm hearing you right, so the idea is if there's a zip code that's not identified in a zone, how are we still addressing that area? Or you're saying specific, so you are saying that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So I think the idea is, to Wendy's point, yesterday at Police Stat, this was brought up as well. So this is something that even in Police Stat, we're getting into the micro of this. This is what we're seeing in reference to these historic zip codes. My follow-up question to Wendy was, well then, hey, what is this indicative of? Are we talking socio-economic depressed areas that need something else going on? Is this education? Is it a whole lot of holistic things? So that's a conversation that we're having even prior to this. What I will say from my district commanders and my districts, so every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we hold crime calls. Every Thursday at 10 o'clock, we have a comstat. When it comes up to instances where we know that there are intimate partner or maybe DV-related, we're having the conversations of, is the person a known, known victim? Is the person a known, known suspect? Are they already in the system for something? Where are they at in the system? Where was a ball dropped? Where do we need to focus on? So we are having those robust conversations specifically in reference to each and every D, domestic violence case.
I'll follow up with you all. I know you, you're working it out in the weekly meetings, but know that this is important to me. And I know that, I know that my colleague over here is paying attention to you. So if we've identified that certain things are happening, I'm trusting it when you guys are going in this weekly meeting, if this is a new map or something that was developed for this hearing, that we're figuring this out.
Councilwoman, may I add just one more thing? So I would say that from a MONC perspective, these, what it means for us is that there is a need for a double-down effect, right? From a prevention and awareness. And as we're looking to the community, because we want the community to be involved in this, we do need to be boots on the ground to kind of figure out how we create more awareness. So that some of the tactics that I talked about before, we know need to be in these zip codes, but not just these zip codes. This was just an illustration of the top five. It is not exclusive of any, of any other area, but it is some of those prevention efforts that we, that I talked about earlier, doing more of that and making sure people understand what IPV is, what it looks like, and that it could be you, right? And that there are resources available to you. So those are continued conversations in, in all of Baltimore, not just these zip codes.
We have been joined by Councilwoman Felicia Porter. I had another question for, for MONC. You guys have a huge presentation. I appreciate it. The lab assessment accuracy rates seem like they went down from something. If I can remember right, it was somewhere from 80, 80% to something within this, in the 60 percentile. Can you talk to me about what that means? Yes.
Yeah. So that particular measure, lab assessment accuracy, is really about, so when the patrol goes out and does the, the valley assessment protocol and asks those questions and fills out the form and sends it to the House of Ruth and Hannah, is all the information there, right? So it's a quality check. Do we have the phone numbers? Are you answering all the questions? It is strictly a It is strictly a quality check of the of the record, so to speak. It is not accuracy in terms of did they go through all the BPD policy, 7-Eleven? Did they offer to transport the victim to the court to get a protective order? That would have to come through observation, obviously. It is an assessment of the accuracy of the record that is transferred to our partners. And so we did see, we see a little bit of slippage in terms of the quality, but that could just be, the report wasn't attached. If something was missing when it went over to the House of Ruth. And so that could be an indicator of training, that we need to be talking about the accuracy and making sure that all of the information is sent on time and complete.
So that that's something that's also going to be brought up in the weekly meetings. I hear, I I understand. I wanted to to get to one, to one item that was important to me. Give me one second, let me get through this. And while I'm actually trying to pull up my my item, Councilwoman Porter, did you have any questions about this topic, any of the agencies?
Uh, no, ma'am, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so this was actually, I know it was regarding our, I know it was regarding our visitation center. So I know that in a previous hearing, in the first hearing, you guys were trying to move it from bi-weekly. And this is where families can come together and do visitation. It was bi-weekly at one point. I think you guys moved it to weekly, which is great. Has there been any additional expansion that has happened since that last hearing? Or recently since your last report that you guys noted it in? I think it's like your your quarterly or annual report you guys put out in April of this year, I think. Has there been any additional expansion or is something else coming for our visitation center for families?
At this point, there hasn't been any more expansion to the hours and then in terms of the days that we're open. So we still do weekly. At this point, we have a specific funding for that. So we obviously always have aspirations to create another center. But I don't want to put that on the radar just yet until we find some funding for that. But we are in search of being able to provide another location. But in terms of anything concrete, not expansion in terms of more sites or more hours, but just programming that is offered to our families that are there. And it is intensive in terms of what the the particular family may need, right? And so making sure we reach out to different partners that provide the services that have been identified through our needs assessment at the visitation center. So always expanding in that perspective.
Okay, thank you. For our Health Department, one item, and I'm, I know that it was a program that was funded for a certain amount of time. You guys briefly, I think, also touched on here, the Dating Matters curriculum. So I can see that the work is still being done. From when that program ended, because I think when it was ending, it was saying, hey, we we just don't have the funding for that one. But what came out of that data, that information that you got from the data, the Dating Matters curriculum?
So what we found was that, again, that not only, so what we did through the demonstration project is that we had thirteen schools that participated in the program, and we separated those schools through randomized trial because it was a demonstration project. So some of the schools were only implementing the standard model, which was the Safe Dates program. And that was specifically with eighth-grade students. The the other model was the comprehensive approach that included multiple grade levels, curricular sessions with students through multiple grade levels. It also included a parent component, so the parents of the students that were participating in those student sessions. We had workshops with them. We had the teacher training and the youth, the youth ambassador component, a policy initiative as well, where we work with city schools to address policy around the code of conduct. And so what we found was that, looking at both of those approaches, that the comprehensive approach was most effective in not only reducing teen dating violence, but it also was instrumental in reducing multiple forms of violence. It is a healthy relationship education program, so it doesn't matter whether or not students are actually involved in dating. But it really looks at the relationships that they have with peers, with siblings, with with fam, with other family members. And so we saw that that program as really being instrumental in building up skills that that are, that are comple, that are complementary for multiple forms of violence. We're talking about conflict resolution. We're talking about identifying emotions and regulating those emotions. We're talking about effective communications, everything that we want to instill in young people who may may be facing intimate partner violence or dating violence, but also looking at bullying, looking at child abuse and neglect. And we're looking at it from multiple levels by working with students individually to build those complementary skills. We're engaging families because we know that families are still influential over over the children that are involved and impacted by these behaviors. And while they are adolescents and teens and gravitating more towards their peers, parents and families still matter. And so what we do is we work with those families to help them understand how to model the behavior for their children. Because we know that sometimes this 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 behavior is learned from families and from communities. And so we we work with parents to make sure that they are positively parenting and that they are having effective communications on an ongoing basis and that they feel comfortable. Because sometimes when we're talking about violence and we're talking about things like dating, we we recognize that that may be an uncomfortable subject for parents. And so what we do is we equip them with the tools so that they are prepared to have these conversations with their young, with their children early and on an ongoing basis. And then we look at those peers that young people may be connected to and making sure that the the peers that are in their circle are positive peers, that they are also exposed to positive experiences so that they're not influencing other peers in their group to do and to engage in harmful risk behaviors. And then in addition to that, we're looking at things like the school community and and the broader community and changing and trying to impact those social norms around the acceptance of violence. So we're engaging community around bystander intervention, about promoting healthy messaging in the communities, about creating opportunities for young people that may be disadvantaged and may be not involved in anything that's structured, but providing opportunities for them to be in safe spaces and involved in structured activities that promote thriving and healthy community development. And then we're looking at the policy level. So I mean, that's the system, system level work. And I think one of the reasons why this initiative came about is because there weren't any policies nor were there programs that were specifically designed to address this issue. And so that's the reason why we did the demonstration project. And I think what we found from that was that, I think that project ended in 2015. We saw since 2015 that that messaging, the the focus around teen dating violence and looking at it at a multifaceted approach has started to increase, not only here in Baltimore City, but in other states across the country.
I brought that up because I had, I have an intern, she's still with me. She's at College, she's at College Park right now. But she went through a Baltimore City Public School. She went through a a very similar program, and some of her friends were like peer navigators for this. And she loved it. And she talked about specifically the regulation of emotions to know how to handle something. And like I would say, hey, relationships are relationships regardless. So she could transition this in a work environment, how to do that type of stuff. That's why I wanted to just know, like, hey, how you guys are using that data? I'm sorry, I just went on a day on tangent. But to bring it back where I want, where I want to go now, a lot of our agencies, we, I think we know this, we're very, we got to take care of our victims, right? But we also need to make sure that we're handling our perpetrators as well. And I don't want to call out, for kids who may be going down the wrong path, how is, how is that program putting those barriers in to kind of stop a kid who may be going down the wrong path? Where we don't want him to go, so they're not doing the high-level stuff when they, when they get old? Can you talk to me about that portion?
Yeah, we found that one of the things that we're seeing a gap is that while we have funding for victims, we have no funding for people who may be experiencing similar challenges and really could benefit from the supports that we offer to victims. And so when we, we heard mentioned earlier around social determinants of health. We know that when we have individuals and communities living in power, I mean, in poverty, that they are experiencing and and more at risk of experiencing some of these, some of these issues, particularly violence. And so what what we think is is critical is building in those supports, not just for victims, but building in supports for anyone who may be experiencing these things and providing opportunities as alternatives for making decisions, all in the name of trying to survive or, you know, maintain their households and things like that. We want to be able to provide those opportunities for them as well. We also know from the Office of Youth and Trauma Services that hurt people hurt people. So we have to look at the perpetrators also. And in in some instances, we are seeing that there's been some exposure to violence and trauma even in the perpetrators. And if that has gone unaddressed, then that behavior is going to continue even in their own relationships or even in encounters with others that they do not know. And so I think that what we have to do is really, really look at this. Again, I think somebody mentioned earlier, it's two sides of the coin. We have to really look at this as a comprehensive approach, looking at it as the cycle of violence and addressing. If we really want to impact it, we we need to address the victimization and the perpetration. In many instances, there are strategies that are shared that could, that could address both of those. I don't, I think that's, that, 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 that's what I see as a, as a critical component. But also, I think it's also the systems. There, we know that there are, there are programs and policies and practices that may have disadvantaged populations, making it very difficult for them to change behavior or redirect and give them opportunities as an alternative. And so I think that when we talk about this issue of violence, that we really need to look at it at a multi-level approach. And we need to dedicate some more time to looking at system reform and how we respond to communities that have experienced disinvestment, who, who, you know, see no hope or opportunities to get out of the conditions that they're exposed to. And I think we're really talking about social determinants of health. I think that's, that's a major, a major component that we have to really look closely. And I know it's, it it seems like a daunting task because we're talking about in many instances, things that have been happening repeatedly for decades. And I think that, you know, it's, it's an opportunity now to really start taking a deeper dive into that and going upstream. As BPD mentioned, we have to start looking at those root causes that are, that are creating some of these behaviors.
Thank you. You mentioned a program, I believe it was the Dove Program. What, what, what was the funding gap?
How much funding was it?
Yeah.
I, let me get back to you on that because it was under my supervision, but it was probably 12 years ago. So let me get the budget to you, like, how much it was. It was a research project, so the cost would look a little different as an implementation program. But honestly, what we would need at the Health Department is a nurse who is trained and who is a specialist in the area. That's what we had. That's the main cost of it, was the salary for that person.
Can, can you get that back to us? What it would realistically like to transition that to now? I know it was a while ago, and I know, you know, numbers change. But if you could just let us know what that gap would be. Before I keep going up, did you have, okay. So I'm gonna go straight to the, I don't want to leave you guys out of it, our state's attorney's office. Previously, there were, I specifically had questions about our victims in court dates and support that was provided to them. So I just wanted to know what improvements, if any, I understand that this is a, a new administration. You guys weren't there at the January 2023 hearing, but you're here now. And I want to know if there have been any improvements on from your administration in regards to ensuring that victims are aware of court dates and any support available to them regarding that.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Amanda Grantham is here, and she's our Director of the Victim Witness Coordinator Unit, brought in and Communication. And also, technology is a big part of her mandate. So I'm gonna turn it over to her, but I did want to just address one thing that has been a theme, which is, we also, I've been to trainings and people in our unit have been to trainings, which explain that perpetrators, for some of the most violent domestic violence, have a observable history of depression. And there are a lot of people in this community that understand that it's not being soft on a perpetrator when they come in, is to try to refer them for treatment for depression because some of the most violent crimes, like strangulation and murder or family annihilation, come from people with prior suicidal ideation or depression. And the question is, are there more opportunities along the way to address that? But it is a paradigm shift from thinking it should all be punishment to that person also needs help. So that's just something that I think we all kind of agree on and that the the trainings I go to all support. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Grantham.
Thanks, Jesse, thanks, Councilwoman. So one of the big things that we have done in the State's Attorney's Office, I have been with you.
I'm sorry to cut you off, just sort of record, can you just give me?
Sure, my name is Amanda Grantham. I am the Chief of the Victim Witness Division within the State's Attorney's Office. Our unit handles pretty much all of the services that come out of the State's Attorney's Office and then also what we call coordination. So the piece that you're really speaking about is our Victim Witness Coordination Team. And since I have been there since last January, so pretty much right after the last hearing, what we have done in the State's Attorney's Office, specifically in the Victim Witness Division, is that we are using, like Jesse said, the technology to our benefit. So we have an internal case management system that has all of our victims and all of our witnesses. And what we now have policies on is that victims and witnesses, all civilians, receive trial date letters four weeks prior to their actual court date. They also receive, at the inception of the case, a Victim Witness Coordinator is assigned to every single felony case and every single district court case. So in district court, we have two district court SVU Victim Witness Coordinators. They are specifically assigned to handle those cases. They are sending the letters to the victims and witnesses in those cases. And then in circuit court, each time a case is indicted, a Victim Witness Coordinator is assigned. So from inception in circuit court, that victim has a Victim Witness Coordinator or advocate for them within the State's Attorney's Office. At that moment, we send out initial letters to all victims. So they are given all of the information. Here's your case number, here's the defendant's name. By law, we have to send out those crime victim notification forms and then all of the resources, the pamphlets that we have within our unit. And then, like I said, within every trial date that comes up, four weeks before, they are receiving a letter to say, hey, this is your trial date. And then anything pre-trial or post-trial, so any hearings that would come up. So pre-trial motions or motions for modifications or things like that after the fact, they receive a letter for those as well. If it's added to the docket last minute, they'll receive a phone call. So we have policies and procedures now set up. That way, we're really trying to make sure that no one gets left out in these gaps. And we're trying to take over that using the technology to alleviate some of the pressure on the Assistant State's Attorneys. Now, they are still reaching out to them and doing their part and calling the victims and calling the witnesses to speak to them before those dates. We want to make sure that they know about their trial dates as soon as humanly possible. So we want to just make sure that they have that information. One of the things I like to say is that sometimes information is just power. And a lot of times, they feel like because they don't know what is going on, they are powerless. And so by us just making sure that they, one, have all of the information that they need, and two, that they have that Victim Witness Coordinator that is assigned to them, need, and two, that they have that Victim Witness Coordinator that is assigned to them, they have that contact, they can pick up the phone and call that person and make sure that they get the answers. And if the coordinator doesn't know, they'll reach out to the Assistant State's Attorney and try to find out the answer for them and get back to them. So we're really doing our part to just make sure that they know about all of their trial dates, all of their court appearances, anything that could be coming up.
Do you all, since you've um, placed those policies in, um, in the technology improvements to make sure that victims are being notified, have you all tracked or have you seen, um, do you have any data that you can share to show, what is the impact? Has, have you seen an impact in victims showing up more for tho, for those court hearings?
Um, I think that might be a question more for Jessie. I know that we do track um, what our outcomes are in case, not, you know, whether we're having to null process a case because a witness or a victim doesn't show up. We're tracking, you know, what our convictions rates and things like that are. Um, so I would assume that just based off of our conviction rates and our null process rates and things like that, we could um, possibly come up with a number just last year versus this year.
Would you, would you all be able to get that information to the committee uh, within a two weeks' time, within, say, the, the twenty-fourth of um, July? Would you be able to put that in? I just want to see if, with the new implementations, are victims showing up to these hearings if you guys are track, if you're able to track it?
Sure, I think, and again, Jessie, Alverson Division Chief, Special Victims, United States Attorney's Office. I think the, w- we can definitely, there is, we have a dashboard, there is quite a bit of information there. I think the, the harder part is going to be to figure out, are victims aware of court and still don't want to come, right? Which would be a no-show versus they're not aware of court and don't, don't come because there is an information gap. So I'll certainly try to take a look at that, um, and, and talk to our folks about getting that data. Um, it, I think the reason for them not appearing may be harder to ascertain, but I will do my best to give, try to get some useful information to the committee within two weeks.
I appreciate it. Um, you know, if, if folks are saying, hey, we didn't get it, and there is an information gap, if that's close, I just want to know if there, if more people are coming, and I appreciate you all, um, working with me.
Right, I would say, by the way, that does tie into the lap, because the highest volume of domestic violence cases are in District Court. And so the prosecutors have to work with the information that we get at intake. So if the police are involved and, or the victim themselves files a complaint, but they don't put good contact information, that's what I said earlier, we leave the case open till a court date. But if, if they've moved, you know, and they're probably not going to send a letter to us informing us, and we don't have a good phone number, um, the, the, the District Court needle is the one that's harder to move because of how cases come in. We don't initiate almost any of the cases in District Court. It's either civilians or there's some police involvement. But, but well, I will definitely do what I can to get, like I said, I think useful data to everybody in two weeks.
Thanks, thanks for your response. Um, has the, has the Bates Administration created a Any Type of Violence Against Um, Women Plan?
Um, I, what I would say is, we have a dedicated unit, the Special Victims Unit, and within it, we are following the National Best Practice of Vertical Integration. So the District Court, uh, domestic violence, we call it, you know, it's Courtroom Five at North Avenue, and while there are other misdemeanor cases there related to family violence, most of it is uh, intermittent partner violence and domestic violence. So those cases are under the supervision of our unit, District Court in general is separate, and then cases would go to a misdemeanor unit, and then a felony unit or narcotics, and a different prosecutor would review the cases, different decisions are made. In our office, while we do have dedicated District Court prosecutors, the leadership team, so the team captain in District Court and the felony team captain, we're all in one group, and we all have one philosophy, and I think you heard Ms. Grantham say, that we have dedicated uh, Victim Witness Advocates in District Court that are specially trained in domestic violence. Um, we have a licensed clinical social worker spot in District Court, which we're about to refill, it turned over, but we have someone starting there in two weeks. We have a licensed clinical social worker at the Circuit Court level, um, there for both adult victims, but also for child victims, either who've witnessed domestic violence or had violence committed against them directly. Um, so I think our unit is, is, is sort of responsible for that. Um, and there is, again, we're integrated all the way up through to the State's Attorney about looking at what the national best practices are, and also what fits Baltimore City. We have a lot of people in our unit who've been prosecutors for over fifteen or twenty years, and this is all they've ever done, is domestic violence or child abuse or sexual assault cases. Um, so I, I would, I would say our, our unit is that, um, we attend the DVFRT, I think, uh, you, you and I may have seen each other at some of the other coordinating council meetings. Um, so I think that's, I, I would say, yes, we, we, we do, uh, we are addressing it, and it's integrated into our Special Victims Prosecution.
I appreciate your response. I have um, one additional question, um, and then maybe some follow-up in there, some follow-ups within it. Um, you highlighted the National, and I'm sorry, um, Director, this is for you, um, you highlighted the National Public Safety Partnership Report. Um, I think that came out in twenty twenty-three. It's like a ninety-two page report. It had about twenty recommendations, um, between agencies. I know that you're going to have this working group, or you guys have a working group, um, that's currently meeting, you're trying to put together additional recommendations. Out of the twenty, and some of them have sub-recommendations, has anything been, um, talk to me about the progress of the initial ones in the twenty twenty-three report?
Absolutely, and that report actually came out in August of twenty twenty-two, um, prior to that report being released, and in the time after, um, this group has continued to meet. Um, I do want to thank, again, BPD, um, and the State's Attorney's Office under the Bates Administration. When we started this work, our Victim Services teams were not working together in a coordinated fashion, they weren't reviewing cases together. Um, we had some ad hoc communication, but I would say, as a system, it was clear, not just in this report, but also to the City Council when we previously presented, um, that we weren't working together in ways that were coordinated and could best serve our victims and survivors. Um, that has completely changed, notably following the mass shooting in Brooklyn Homes. Our teams had to work together onsite, co-located together to do that work, and that was one of the first steps to, um, some of the reforms that needed to take place, to make sure that we were prioritizing victims and never making them feel like they were criminalized or we somehow saw them through that lens. I did want to turn it over to Mark Mason, our Victim Services Associate Director, who can talk about specifically where we stand on the reform effort. This is a process that our team tracks meticulously, because I think out of those twenty recommendations, it can break down into close to eighty sub-recommendations. So there's a lot there, um, but I will say, we have a strong foundation, and this work is far from stopping. Mark?
Good afternoon, Madam Counsel, uh, and Councilwoman Porter. Uh, yes, um, we actually are meeting in the next couple of weeks, I believe, to, uh, as a group, evaluate the recommendations, where the percentages are, to be able to discuss, um, those percentages that we feel are, um, are at a, a good percentage level, uh, and also be able to evaluate the ones that aren't, and then to determine, um, how we can actually move those recommendations up, uh, to a better place.
One of the record, let me, let me go to one of the recommendations. One of the recommendations was about data sharing, um, amongst agencies. And it was a recommendation about developing an MOU. I know that you guys are working a lot closer together, um, you probably can get the information that you need, um, at a greater level, um, because of the collaboration that's taken place between the agencies. Has an MOU been developed? Is that one of the recommendations that has been started, like where we at on that one, specifically data sharing and establishing that MOU?
So we are, um, we have been in conversations with BPD about establishment of an MOU. Um, we recently, and I, I want to say recently, within maybe the month of May, brought together our legal teams to talk about some of the, the nuance there. We know some of this data is sensitive, we don't all have the clearance to review it, but in large part, what we want to be able to do is some of the things you saw here in this hearing today, understand the aggregate level data, understand the trends and what direction we're moving on issues, and make sure that we can um, effectively see across this entire system, that we, we work very closely with BPD and the data team, and I think have been able to voluntarily work together to get the data we need, but we know having that MOU in place, um, would make it so that as we go through different staffing transitions, as we move forward as a future, as a city, um, that that data is always something that can be accessible and that we have the ability to analyze. Um, so to answer your question, the MOU is not currently in place, um, but we're actively developing it, and it's something that I can follow up with BPD to make sure, you know, we secure and seal.
Can you um, just update the committee once those conversations say place, uh, to let us know when it's going to be finalized? I think that that's an important word, important piece of all, of all of this. Um, I want to thank um, all of our agencies, I appreciate um, everyone who's here today um, for answering our questions. We're going to get into public testimony um, at this time, and we're just going to check to see if we had anyone who signed up in the chambers to testify, or if we have anybody online. And we have um, Lisa's lawyer from Turnaround. And if you could um, just state your first, your last name and organization you're with for the record, please.
Thank you. We are actually partnering with Monty to run the pilot program, the DV High Risk Task Force. Um, we are being currently transitioned through um, the Geiger Institute out of Cleveland, who has implemented this in several cities across the United States. Um, ideally, we're going to be partnering with one precinct, um, in Baltimore City to kind of identify these higher-risk um, team, um, individuals and bring them to a interdisciplinary team for collaboration to hopefully prevent um, fatality review team. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if we have anyone else within the chambers, um, who would like to testify, you didn't get a chance to, to sign up? And seeing and hearing none, we're going to double check to see if we have anyone online who would like to testify virtually. If you are online and you would like to testify, if you could use the raise hand function, we're just going to double check again. Okay, that's going to conclude our public testimony. Um, again, I want to thank all of our agencies, um, for being here today just to provide some updated numbers. Um, we will be back um, in the future, maybe just one more time before this, this term is over, um, in twenty, in twenty twenty-four. Um, you guys have a great day, this hearing is now in recess.